There we go. Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We have lots of guests with us today. We're glad to have you all here. At this time, I would like to welcome up Cindy Howard, who is the Vice President of Operations of the Flower Mound Chamber of Commerce. And she's going to lead us in our invocation. But before we do, I would like to acknowledge a loss here in Denton County of Nathan Gage Ingram. He was one of two Navy SEALs who died on a recent mission in East Africa. He was 27 years old and a resident of Roanoke. He was raised in Trophy Club and enlisted in the U.S. Navy in September of 2019. And we heard the sad news last night and this morning about his passing. And so it's a deep loss, obviously, to his family and all of Denton County and that of the nation. And so you may have noticed on your way in, our flags are at half-staff today and in the days to come. And so if we judge us as we stand to have our invocation for this meeting, we'll pause for a moment of silence in honor of his service and great sacrifice to the country.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning with grateful hearts. Father, we pray for this family who has lost this young man. And Father, what a tragic loss to not only the world but to his family. And we lift them up to you that you'll comfort them deeper than the pain they're experiencing today. Father, we thank you so much for this county and for the people who lead it. We ask that this will be a great meeting and that you will bless each one that plans it, each one that leads it. And we just praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Caitlin Melton with State Representative Ben Baumgartner's office. He's going to lead us in our pledges.
Please join me in the pledge to the greatest nation in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the greatest state in the nation, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you, Cindy, and thank you, Caitlin. We do have some special guests with us today. We love to welcome our Chamber of Commerce groups. And Cindy, if you'll come up and introduce our, talk a little bit about our special guests this morning. We're, we have lots of Chamber of Commerce leadership classes, and today's Flower Mound Chamber of Commerce leadership.
Thank you, Judge. Stand-up leadership Flower Mound. This is the class of Leadership Flower Mound for the Flower Mound Chamber of Commerce. And this is County Day. And we just want to say thank you to all who planned today and for having us here as guests.
Perfect. Good. They have a, they have a very thoughtful agenda, lots of different office holders and departments speaking them today. So I think it's going to be a great day. So thank you, Cindy, for planning that. Commissioner Mitchell, I don't know if y'all, commissioners, did y'all want to extend comments? All right, y'all good? All right, good. Thank you. All right, next, let's go to item one, which is public comment for items not listed on the agenda. And we have two registered speakers this morning. The first one is Mr. Willie Hudson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's Willie Hudson. I live at 623 Newton. Is that my thing going on?
I'll start your three minutes over. It's okay. Take it if you need to.
I thought I turned it off. I guess I didn't. I'd like for you to look at this map that I wanted to have on the TV monitors. And I'll speak to that. This is St. John's. Here's the cemetery. And here's the easement that allows people to get to it, but it's closed off. Okay? I, my son, who is the mayor of Denton, many of you know, was fussing at me about how I talk to you all and how I treat you all. I don't know where I went wrong with him, but he's just not, you know. Anyway, he's Republican and he likes all of you. Anyway, I went wrong somewhere. Anyway. So he said, why are you so mean to them? If you want them to do stuff, you need to talk to them. And I thought about that. Why am I, why do I view you the way I view you? Because you're not honest with me. That's why. You're not honest and you're not open. You say, whoa, what do you mean? I'm my mom and I'm smiling. I'm looking down at something. I'm the DS, not you. So I said, you told me that I couldn't put that, my information I'm going to give you, on the screens. And I thought, what's wrong with that? Why can't I put my information up there? And I said to the person, the lady who's the message, who gave me the message, who has to deal with me, I said, well, I want a full explanation as to why I can't do that. Show me in the rules. I never got it. And so I'm having, now I'm wondering what is wrong with putting that on the screen? I don't know. But I'm going to do some things to try to get my information out. The people that I'm representing are no longer here. They're dead. And they ran off their property, we think, by the Klan. And now you are fighting very hard not to do anything to help them. Well, I don't know if you're fighting very hard. You're not doing anything. I asked you. One thing I want, I'm going to ask this too. I want, now that we know where the boundaries are of that cemetery, I want fencing put around it that's appropriate for our cemetery. That's another ask. I've asked that you clean it up. You did that. I've asked that you find the graves. You haven't done that. And so now I'm asking you to put the boundaries up so that they can be recognized.
Thank you for your time, sir. All right, our next speaker today is Chelsea Stallings.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I'm Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, 76201.
Good morning.
Good morning. And I am here with Mr. Willie Hudson just to give an update on the project that we're working on that he was just talking about with the cemetery. So we do have plans in the next few weeks to get out there, excuse me, when the weather gets a little better and do some cleanup, kind of a first-of-the-year situation, and go out there, reassess, and see what the needs are going to be. Just a couple of quick updates. The report that was presented in mid-December by Jessica Luther Romo, we have been working with the Portal to Texas History that's based out of UNT to get that report published so that it is live, it does have a place to live, and so that it isn't just a PDF that we're sharing, or so that if anyone wants to read it, they don't have to do a FOIA request through this body in order to access it. That will help researchers in the future as we're trying to discover more and more of what happened to the cemetery and what happened to the Black community. We are also working, Willie has been working with the NAACP, and we're going to be expanding those efforts this year to get more grassroots collective interest in the project so that we can get more people involved with understanding what happened to the cemetery, what happened to the descendants. Are there still descendants of people who are buried there that are still alive today? We do also suspect that, from the class, that the UNT college class that did some work out there about five or six years ago, that there are upwards of hundreds of people that are buried in that cemetery. And at some point, we would eventually really love to have a final head count and see what we can find out about the breadth and the depth of the community that used to live there that went defunct in 1938. So these are my updates for today, and I thank you for your time, and we'll see you next week.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts. All right, next is Mr. Stephen Dillon Berg.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
And I would remind our speakers that we have a three-minute time limit for our open comments, but go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you guys for leave for, to go just a little bit over because I'm not sure I can get to all this.
Sir, I'm going to abide by standing operating procedure.
You've taken a minute from me before in the past. I'll take one extra minute.
Three minutes, sir.
This is my brother who served this country, and his wife is dead now on account of something that I think that y'all could fix. And so that's what I'm asking for help on, and that's why I would go over on time. So let me leave that up there for y'all. So I'm here on behalf of that better day we each know is possible. Because when we look outside, we cannot think that this is as good as it gets. And I personally feel that way, and I feel a lot of y'all probably do as well. I give this testimony subject to perjury. I got my hand on a Bible right now. So just so y'all know, this is the truth, so help me God. I've got paperwork going back to John Pierre-Pont and Jane Pierre-Pont, Zach Quill-Morgan. And so y'all have said you appreciate the Daughters of the American Revolution here. So I found my mom's Daughters of the American Revolution paperwork. And I can show you guys where, back to the 1640s, my family has been fighting for the rights of Americans. And we care, and I care definitely. And so this is stuff that I would appreciate y'all addressing. I've asked y'all for help a number of times, and I haven't gotten any response from you. And that's not fair to me. It's not fair to the people that have gone before, and it's not fair to our community that we can't get y'all to engage in life and death type situations. So I pray you will do your jobs, which is to take evidence given to you here and before and put an item on the agenda for next week. That's all. And that way, we can have an open discussion as to the issues that I've laid out. Number one, is the cure for cancer known? And is that being hidden from cancer patients? I say the answer is yes. And cancer is a microparasite, which is the only thing that explains why Artemisia absintheum, which is wormwood, works in curing it, why the benzamidazole class of drugs works in curing it, fenbendazole and mebendazole, both of which are already being used to treat parasite infections. And so why that wouldn't be employed in people? Mebendazole is already approved in people, and it's used for parasites, intestinal parasites. But we can't get, there's some research going toward it, but the cancer doctors are still not telling the people who are dying. That's the problem. And wasabi. We don't have real wasabi in the United States. The Japanese consume raw fish, and they know that there's parasites associated with it. They eat real wasabi to cure themselves of that. We don't have that in the United States. And I think that's intentional, obviously. So I pray you will also address vaccine injuries and deaths and why people of Great Britain and the UK are receiving $150,000.
Mr. Dillon Berg, if you'll please finish your sentence. If you'll please finish your sentence.
Yeah, I'm about finished. Like I said, I'd asked for one more minute. You took that from me before. For vaccine injuries with filling out a form, no questions asked, yet I can't get doctors to even acknowledge that my mom having a stroke five days after taking the vaccine is unusual. Her first stroke ever.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon Berg. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Why are you cutting?
Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We noted that in your email last night. Thank you, sir. Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right. All right. Next, let's go to item 3C. 3C, we have three special guests with us this morning that we want to take time to acknowledge. And Commissioner Mitchell, do you want to open up? We're going to be doing 3C, D, and E about our special guests. And do you want to make any introductory comments about our three guests that we're acknowledging this morning?
I'm excited this morning for our guests this morning.
Your microphone.
Victoria Myers. I'm sorry. I wasn't ready. Nathan Danforth and Jacqueline Shaw. If anyone was out this weekend, we did, we started cleaning up the Henry Macedonia Cemetery back in 2022. And so we got it all cleaned up, and then Victoria came along and raised money to build a fence around it. And then Nathan came along and provided a flagpole. And this was all done under the watchful eye of Jackie, Jacqueline Shaw. This was her project. She's a member of Westside Baptist Church, and this was her project. We have an African-American cemetery in Lewisville. And we do still have some of the family members that's alive. But, and one family member was trying to clean it up by himself and couldn't get it done. So Jackie put out a flyer and email, and over 250 people came, and then 750 people came, and we all worked together to get this done. So on Saturday, we did a big reveal of the flagpole and all the thing, and the gates that had been done.
The signage.
The signage, yeah. We got a sign put up on the road so it would have direction as to how to get to the cemetery. We had a wonderful time. I wish we had put pictures up to let you see. A lot of people attended. And we were able to get that done, get that cemetery cleaned. And family members were grateful that we did that, and I'm grateful to the family members for allowing us to go in there and take care of that because they could have said no. But they were grateful that we got in there and cleaned it up. And Judge, you were there on many of the cleanups. Did you miss one or none? I think you missed, I think 8% none. So we all got together, citizens, church members, family members. Everybody got together, pooled their resources, and got this done under the direction of Jackie Shaw. So this morning, we have proclamations for these three people. I'm especially proud of the young people, Nathan and Victoria, for their work that they did because, you know, they're working on their Eagle Scout badge, Nathan is. And it's just wonderful when you get young kids involved in something, helping someone that they didn't know and their parents didn't even know. So at this point, Judge, I'm going to hand it back over to you and let you take over.
Good. Thank you. So we have three resolutions here, and I'm going to go ahead and, we'll go ahead and do Victoria. If you, Victoria, if you want to come forward, it's great to see you again. I think about $100 worth of Girl Scout cookies from her.
I have some with me if you need any more.
It was a big box of boxes of cookies. So thank you for being here. And I want to read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing Victoria Myers for her efforts at Champion Macedonia Cemetery. And whereas Victoria Myers is being honored today for her efforts to clean and beautify the Champion Macedonia Cemetery in Lewisville as part of working toward achieving her Girl Scout Gold Award, the greatest Girl Scout achievement. And whereas Victoria Myers is a senior at Town View School for the Talented and Gifted in Dallas, a member of the Girl Scouts and lives in Denton County. And whereas many of the graves dating back to slavery are marked only with blank stones and with sticks tied in the form of crosses, while other graves are believed unmarked entirely. Whereas Victoria's Girl Scout Gold Award project has already led to the installation of a black wrought iron fence with a gated entryway and bringing community members to assist with cleanup at the cemetery. She also contributed to the Black History Cemetery, receiving a historical marker from the Texas Historical Commission that will be placed at the cemetery. Whereas Victoria created Project 80 Roots to bring beauty back to Champion Macedonia Cemetery and historical roots back, historical roots back to the world. And is still accepting donations toward the project to continue additional improvements. And whereas during the Denton County Commissioners' Court on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, And whereas during the Denton County Commissioners Court on Tuesday, November the 28th, 2023, Victoria was excited to report on her project and its eventual completion this spring. And now therefore be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby honor and recognize Victoria Myers for her contributions for, to revitalizing the Champion Macedonia Cemetery, and we wish her all the best in earning her Girl Scout Gold Award done in open court this 23rd day of January 2024 upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell's chair, by the, the chair will second. Any discussion? Well, congratulations. We are super excited and proud of all your accomplishments, and it was great to see it, see such improvement done at the cemetery. Do you want to say anything?
Well, I can't say thank you enough. Thank you to the county judge and the commissioners for this opportunity and being able to speak both today and back in November. I like to mark January 20th as the beginning of the end rather than the final project. There's still more work to be done. There's still much more we can do, and I'm just excited to see it to the end, so thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're gonna come down and we'll take a picture down here with your parents, everybody. So, okay, good. Thank you. All right. We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you. All right. Next is Nathan. Nathan, if you'll come forward, and you've got some troop members here with you. I think that's great. But they helped you. So this is a, a court proclamation recognizing Nathan Danforth for his efforts at the Champion Macedonia Cemetery, and whereas Nathan Danforth is being honored today for his efforts to clean and beautify the Champion Macedonia Cemetery in Lewisville as part of working to achieve his Eagle Scout Award, the highest rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Nathan has been participating in scouts from his Tiger Cup days at age six through his current service with Boy Scout Troop 45 at age 18 as a Hebron High School senior. And whereas Champion Macedonia Cemetery, a historic black cemetery, was selected as Nathan's Eagle Scout project. And whereas to pay tribute to the African-American veterans buried in Champion Macedonia, Nathan placed a 24-foot flagpole and American flag inside the cemetery. There's some great pictures there on our slides. And whereas he researched each veteran's history of military service to place beside each headstone an American flag and a medallion showing which branch they served and a QR code that links to a website detailing their history. And whereas Nathan also created signage for each of the two cemeteries at Champion Macedonia located just east of the Interstate 35 front of Drogones, south of Corporate Drive. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court would like to honor and recognize Nathan Danforth for his contributions to honoring veterans and revitalizing the Champion Macedonia Cemetery, and we wish him all the best in earning his Eagle Scout Award done in open court this 23rd day of January 2024 upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Well, Nathan, it was great to see you out there and, and see in person all your, the great work that you led, and I know that Eagle Scout project takes many, many people being involved, and then you're the leader and, and coach as they get across the finish line. So do you have any comments you'd like to add, sir?
I would like to thank all of y'all for allowing me for this opportunity to help represent and support the veterans right there.
Perfect. Good.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Do you have anyone you want to introduce, potentially? All right. Your, your group. He's got a lot of folks with him. I know Victoria's parents and so forth are here, so she's got a big group, too. Well, thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for helping him with his project. Yes, absolutely. We have a, we have a, a motion, a, a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Ms. Shaw, if you'll come forward. Yes. Thank you, Jackie. This is a court proclamation recognizing Jacqueline Shaw for her efforts at the Champion Macedonia Cemetery. Whereas Jacqueline Shaw is, is the Champion Macedonia Cemetery Revitalization Committee Chair. And whereas in January 2022, Jacqueline coordinated the first Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service at the Macedonia, Champion Macedonia Cemetery, where over 350 community volunteers showed up to help. And whereas in January of 2023, Jacqueline coordinated the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service at the cemetery with more than 750 volunteers showed up to help. And whereas in March of 2023, Jacqueline works with Commissioner Bobby J. Mitchell and the Texas Historic Commission on the official Texas Historical Marker for Champion Macedonia Cemetery, Historic Black Cemetery. Whereas Jacqueline continues to coordinate with organizations and companies to clean and beautify the cemetery. And whereas while supporting their projects at the cemetery, Jacqueline is the awards project leader for Girl Scout Victoria Meyer and Boy Scout Nathan Danforth. Whereas Jacqueline has brought awareness to the cemetery through media outlets, social media, and speaking to groups. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court would like to honor and recognize Jacqueline Shaw for her efforts in bringing awareness to the Champion Macedonia Cemetery done in open court this 23rd day of January 2024 upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, Jackie, I would just like to give a big thank you to all that you've done for the cemetery, done for the community, and that you've inspired and these young folks to be involved in historic preservation and honoring those who came before us. And that's what we're really called to do, really, is to help inspire present and future generations, and you've done both of those. So thank you so much for all your efforts.
I just, Jackie, I just want to thank you. You've worked hard on this, and you called everybody that you needed to help you. You didn't ask for money, you asked for help. And then some people came and they gave money. The city of Lewisville came, you know, many, I'm not gonna start naming groups, because I don't know all the groups, but you do. But I want to appreciate your effort, because you didn't have to do it either, and you worked with the families to make sure the families knew what was going on at every junction. And so I just appreciate a citizen stepping up, seeing a need, working to get that need taken care of, and that's what you've done. And it's not, it's not over. I know you, you'll be watching, and you've, you've secured many groups to come out and continue to work on keeping the cemetery clean and keeping it up. So ABC Pest Control?
Yes, ma'am, and landscaping.
And landscaping, and landscaping is the one that did the landscaping around the flagpole. And then CAFAs men are gonna be doing it, coming out doing the cemetery cleaning up on a regular basis. Just so many people, you know, a lot of times, if you, if you step, you make one step, somebody else will come behind you and make two. If you, they see that you're doing something to help someone or do something good, a lot of people will step up and try to help you. And that's what they've done, is they've, everyone has stepped up and say, oh, yeah, Jackie, I'll help. And so it's been a pleasure to see. I've been in Lewisville since 1971, knew of the cemetery then, have attended many funerals and burials at that cemetery. And so I know what the condition was of the cemetery, and I know the work that was done, and I just appreciated you and all the family members, and some of them have gotten old, and some of them have moved on, and some of them are buried in that cemetery. And Jackie, it is just a pleasure to be able to recognize you for the work that you've done and the work that you've done with these young people to inspire them to, okay, let's get this done. And that's what we all ought to be about, is let's get it done. Let's not wait for somebody else to do it. We are the persons that need to be doing it. And so, and if you make one step, somebody make two. So just remember that in all that you do, and we thank you.
Commissioner Edmondson.
Thank you. Thank you so much for what you've done. Listening to Commissioner Mitchell, I'm just extremely impressed. But you exemplify what I think is real in Denton County, and that is, if you ask for help, there are thousands, hundreds and thousands of people who will help. Thank you for showing us that, because we all need to help in lots of ways. And thank you so much. Bobby, this is a, a great lady, and I thank you so much for recognizing.
I think she's very special.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Commissioner?
Yeah, so, um, thank you. You know, it's, you're a great example of a, of a wonderful human being here in Denton County, and you do some wonderful things, obviously. And I think it's a perfect example. You know, we had Mr. Huspers come in here, and he comes in here every week, and he goes about it the total opposite way you did it, right? You get people engaged because you ask in the proper way. You try to, you're trying to do something better for the community, instead of up here demanding and acting like we're a bunch of idiots and we don't ever do anything. And, and that's unfortunate, because we do, we actually do quite a bit more than what he wants to give credit for. But people like you, he needs to learn from, but he won't listen to you. Even if you talk to him, he wouldn't listen to you. And it's unfortunate, because we could do the same thing throughout the county with these same similar issues if people would do things more like you. So I, I really appreciate it, I respect you, and thank you so much for what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Jackie, do you have anything to say?
Yes, yes, yes. Well, I want to say thank you. Thank you so much to Commissioner Bobby Mitchell. I could not do what I do without her. Thank you to the Commissioners Court, Judge East. Thank you for always picking up my, my call as well. It's too many people to thank, so just a blanket thanks to everyone that, since 2022, that has come out and helped with the Champion Cemetery, whether it was, came out and put sweat equity in, donated to Victoria's project, or bought a breakfast meal for a cleanup. But I would like to say a big thank you to the city of Lewisville, because without them, nothing could have been done. They were amazing. Mayor, Mayor TJ Gilmore and City Manager Clara Pows, just amazing team at the city of Lewisville. And I am, I am really, really proud to be working with the young people, Nathan, our scout, and Victoria, our Girl Scouts. They have been a jewel. I have learned from them, and I am just elated to be able to be their sponsor for their project. And also a special shout out to the Pilot, Pilot Nob Rotary Club. This amazing club donated 100 white crosses to the Champion Macedonia Cemetery, because we have so many graves that do not have markings. They are marked by only stones, and they came out and placed them in the locations that they needed to, to have a proper signage of, of a burial. So thank you to them, but again, thank you to everyone. Too many people to name to say thank you to.
You're thinking through them, too, Jackie, and like Republic Services with their dumpsters and so forth.
Yes, yes.
You know, you had a good cleanup day when you're running out of dumpster room, you know, where you call for more dumpsters.
And can I say this? The 2020, the 2023, we took off eight dumpsters of just debris.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Jerry, thank you so much.
Yeah, Jerry Harwell, Republic. Thank you. Thank you. We love our Jerry.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Yeah, I was thinking, there's lots of different partners in this, and it's, you're exactly right, Commissioner, it's, it's on the approach and about building partnerships, you know, and so, and so Jackie, you've done a great job of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a, do we vote yet? We have a motion, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all, to all three of y'all.
I guess I might be first since I'm standing here first. Thank you so much. Thank you. You'll do it in a group?
Do you want to do individuals or a group? How do you want? Still complaining all the time, they do something about it.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Big, it's like night and day.
So, that's what he does, he cleans up junk.
Right. All right, we're gonna go, we're gonna proceed in our agenda to 13B. To 13B indeed, we have Kevin Edwards from our District Judges Office. He's one of the administrators over there and I'm gonna go ahead and, and Judge Hill was here this morning and as was Judge Breeding and they both have jury trials and hearings and so, excuse them members. And so I'll go ahead and open 13B. If you have any questions, we can hear from Kevin. So 13B is a approval of a request to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the Fiscal Year 2025 Special Courts Grant Program for the 367 Family Drug Court an amount of $233,000, $233,112 in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Move a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 13C, Approval Request to Submit a Grant Application to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the Fiscal Year 2025 Specialty Court Grant Program. The Adult Drug Court, an amount of $377,033 in any appropriate action. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
All right. We didn't want to slow down the wheels of justice this morning. I wanted to let that continue forward. At this time, I would like to welcome Sheldon Gilbert forward, who's the President of our Denton County Emergency Services District Number One. And our agenda item today is a presentation by the Board of Directors of the Denton County Emergency Services District Number One regarding, regarding the current state of Denton County Emergency Services District. None in any appropriate action. And Commissioner Edmondson, did you want to open up this item?
Thank you so much Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm sure you all remember the problems that the Emergency Services District Number One has faced in the past 12 months. Uh, and they've come out of it just beautifully. I've asked them to come and explain where things are today and where we, what we can look for in the future. And their Board President Sheldon Gilbert is here to tell us about that.
Commissioner, Judge, thank you for having us. It's a privilege and an honor to be here. Before we get to the presentation, which I'm very excited to give to you this morning because it's a whole lot more fun this year than last year. Um, I thought maybe I could introduce our board members that you all have, uh, assigned to us for ESD one and ESD two. So if I could have all the board members from ESD one and ESD two who are here and Sam and Megan to come up. Uh, I'd like to introduce them. We are extremely excited and thankful for the, uh, board members that you have all appointed to these boards. Uh, you have a highly qualified subject matter experts with great skillsets and great historical work experience that they bring so much to these boards. So, uh, as you know, one of the things that we did is that we purposely, uh, moved the President and the Vice and the Treasurer to both boards. And obviously the goal behind that was to have consistency and accountability and transparency in our policy and our financial administration. So that is myself and Rick Merrill, we serve on both boards. ESD one, which is responsible for the Fire and Rescue Services, uh, was filled out by, um, Mark Pape from Copper Canyon. Um, Mark comes with a lot of experience, a lot of board experience, a lot of nonprofit experience. And he doesn't have to pretend to be the smartest guy in the room. He is, he's a Harvard graduate, so that's all good. And, uh, so we're super, super thankful to have him. He's done a lot of work. Uh, Keith Mashburn is not here today. He's out on a boat eating food, I think, still, I'm not sure. But he, uh, he's gonna serve as the Vice President and was assigned to a new term. And then Jared Harwell, here on Gerald Harwell, is gonna sit on ESD one and be a tremendous asset and a subject matter expert to help us as we deal with development and growth within the district and with our regional partners throughout the county. So that's ESD one. ESD two, which is the Emergency Medical Services Overlay that you all approved of the election and we were very successful with, is going to be overseeing the Emergency Medical Services. And that is myself and Richard Merrill, I'm sitting on that as President and Treasurer. Um, we also have Donna Welsh as our Vice President. Donna Welsh comes with a town manager, city manager experience, brings a wealth of knowledge to us. Uh, Jeff Grubb, I didn't see Jeff, is he here today? He's not here, uh, but he's done a lot of work with the high tech industry and he's a gold, he has a gold star nonprofit for Navy SEALs who have died. So obviously he's involved with Roanoke death, unfortunately, we're very sad about that. Um, and then also Jerry Kirby, who has a long history in the fire service here in North Texas, uh, with our district, Flower Mound and, and some other jurisdictions. So we're thankful to have these board members. Um, I wanted to introduce them to you. We didn't have the chance to be sworn in here. We did it through our, our administrative notary. Uh, but I was wondering if we can maybe get a picture with you all for the new boards. Would that be a possibility?
Yes.
Yes, and why don't you introduce Sam and Megan?
Oh, and then Sam and Megan, uh, Sam's gonna be speaking in a few minutes. And Megan, who's our Communications Director, basically the hub of the wheel, all things happening. And then the Fire Chief should be here any minute. And that, here he is, uh, and that's Chief Ricky Vaughn, who will also be speaking as part of this presentation. And it's just been a real rock star and we're just super glad to have him.
So Judge, can we take a picture with you?
Yeah, we can do, you want to do it now or at the end of the item? You want to do it now?
You don't mind, and then, then we can do the presentation then. We won't have you do your aerobics anymore. Thank you very much. There you go. Oh, look at you. Okay, that's fine, we'll take it.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to do that introduction and to have a picture taken. I know some of them may have to leave, but hopefully they can stay with us. But, uh, it is, it's a real honor and a privilege to be here before you this year. Um, this is the second year, um, that the Chief and I and the new board members have, have been here. Um, when I came last year, when we came last year at this time, it wasn't such great news. We were finding all sorts of stuff. But I wanted to do a, a brief overview, uh, at your request on what we did in 2023. Go over some brief targets on what we're trying to do in 2024. Talk a little bit about the planning process that got us here because this just didn't happen by accident. We do have a process we're in. And then allow the Chief to talk a little bit about the operations and Sam, uh, to talk a little bit about the association and what they're doing. Because not only are they very engaged with what we're doing here locally, they're engaged with what's happening statewide with ESDs. So to that end, we'll go next slide, please. Uh, in January 2023, as you know, you appointed three new board members to the ESD one board. Um, and the Fire Chief and the Board was sworn in. And, uh, we immediately began to do auditing of retirement and pay discrepancies as well as the other functional discrepancies that we found that I don't need to repeat that we looked at. In April of 2023, one of the things that you asked us to do in your initial resolution was to move all assets and all personnel from ESD, uh, from the AVFD, the Volunteer Fire District, which is where the shenanigans happen, to the ESD. And that in fact did happen last April. Um, in May, the former Fire Chief did plead guilty to several counts of federal charges and is subject to being charged here in the next several weeks. Um, one of the, um, positives that has come out of that is we have been notified by the Department of Justice that we are potentially gonna receive up to $500,000 in, in payment from, from the Fire Chief as part of his sentencing. So we're, we're thankful for that. It does not cover everything, but it certainly makes a dent in some of. In July of 2023, we had discovered that we had, um, had a significant deficit and that we had a structural problem that needed to be fixed long-term. We came to you as well as all the other jurisdictions that we serve and everybody stepped up. Everybody contributed, everybody helped us get through last year. And then the long-term solution, of course, was to have the election to get Lantana into the ESD one and to overlay ESD two so we could properly fund the Fire and EMS services that had been underfunded for several years. And, uh, that was wildly successful with approval rates of 89 to 93%. Um, the community spoke very loud and clear that they wanted a sustainable, high, high level of service within the communities. Um, and we're honored that we're gonna be able to provide that for them moving forward. But none of that would have happened if you didn't approve the election and if you didn't help us fill that deficit last year. And so we are in great, um, thanks and we appreciate that. September through December, the last quarter, or the, um, we basically repaid all the retire, retirement that was not paid or inappropriately were taken. So the, the firefighters are whole on their retirement pay. That was another, uh, thing we were told to do. Um, the election was called and it was approved unanimously. And we repaid the overtime payment, which was the second discrepancy, one of two to the firefighters. And so there's only one payment left and I'll talk about it in 2024. That should be taken care of by the end of February. So it was a very productive 2023 and we ended up in a whole lot better place than where we started. So thankful for all your support and all the support of all our communities, as the Board, the Fire Chief, the administrative team, the Association, and the men and women on the ground, who never waver. 2024, next slide, please. So we have now two ESD boards. We have ESD number one and ESD number two. And we have a number of things that are on our radar screen for this next year. For the, uh, I just broke it into the three quarters for this calendar year, uh, for this fiscal year, rather. January through March, we, we swore in the five new board members. We had our first joint meeting. Uh, we are in fact working through how to have those joint meetings together. It worked very well. Uh, we were sworn in, there has been an orientation and then there's gonna be some training, a workshop for all the new board members coming up with the Fire Chief's gonna run them through kind of the, uh, one-on-one of fire service so that we're all on the same page moving forward. We also plan on making the second retirement payment for the final employment pay, uh, final repayment to the firefighters of this whole, uh, multi-year problem, uh, in the third week in February. And that will be the end of that and then we will be looking at moving forward. Uh, the first meeting of ESD one and ESD two, we have established a community advisory board. So in addition to the Commissioners, we felt it important that we have a forum based on what we learned through this whole experience to have the mayors, uh, and the town hall managers or the city managers meeting with us on a quarterly basis along with three members at large, just to update them, much like we're doing you and let the community stay engaged in what we're doing, why we're doing it. And then give us some advice and some input as we move forward with some of these large initiatives moving forward. Our goal is to have no surprises, complete transparency and sustainability for the long term. We also were receiving our recommendations for our internal control measures, which as you know, we had a forensic audit conducted by BDO that did two things. One is to look at our internal controls and how we do business. And the other is to look at the who, what, when, or why, how did this all happen and how will this never happen again? Um, a lot of that has been established and some changes have been made. But we will receive the remaining BDO recommendations here later this month and beginning to implement those internal control measures that will really just make sure we're operating within best practices, uh, at the nationwide level. In April through June, um, we are, as we, when we sold the ballot measure, we made it clear to the community that the men and women who are providing the service today will provide the service tomorrow, which means that ESD two for Emergency Medical Services will be contracting with ESD one. So the services are provided the same way. We do not want redundant overhead, we do not want redundancy. We want to have efficiency and economies of scale and all the different things that this regional model brings. But we are gonna be providing the, the financing and the oversight from ESD two on the EMS side of things. So that contract for service should be established between April and June. We also are establishing what assets are gonna be owned by ESD one, what gonna be owned by ESD two, who's gonna carry what debt and how that works. And so that's something that we're working on currently with Rick Merrill and myself on both boards to determine, uh, for instance, uh, will the ambulances be owned by ESD two and leased back to ESD one to provide the service, those type of things. There are some inherent benefits to having debt by both ESDs as it relates to, uh, your ESD as it relates to setting your rates and, and Senate Bill Two. So we're looking at all of that. And then we'll also be receiving that final forensic audit with any remaining findings as it relates to the who, what, when, where and how. And then in July through September, uh, we will be working diligently to get ready for the new fiscal year where we will be officially above water. Uh, we have, uh, commissioned a compensation and classification study to look at all of our positions, to see how we're paying in relation to industry standards. We're gonna be adopting a pay policy as a board and we're gonna be making sure that we have everything in place so that we can manage and sustain the salary and benefits, keep the best and the brightest, but make sure that we're within the, the realm and the arena we need to be. Uh, we're gonna develop fiscal 2025 cost allocation and funding for ESD one and two as part of the new budget. We're gonna hold public hearings and adopt the budget. And then we're gonna complete our master plan and our strategic plan, which we started this last year. Um, all these things that I just talked to you about didn't happen in a vacuum. It wasn't brainstormed and thrown on the board, it was a process. And so I thought I'd just review and, and Commissioner Edmondson asked that I review real quickly, what does that process look like from our perspective? I'll guess I'll start by saying this, a master plan is a 10 to 15, it's, it's akin to what you would do in a general plan for a city and a general plan for the county. How are you gonna zone? How are you gonna do things, big picture, to have a thriving, safe community that is, that is economically sustainable? It is no different from a fire master plan, that's a 10 to 15 year look. And then we have what we call a strategic plan, which is more of a three to five year living document that the administration, the fire commissioners, the Association all participate in on an annual basis. That's the arrow, if you will, with the master plan being the target. And we continued up that, that based on operational, administrative and political realities. So, so that's what we're gonna be doing and continuing. So real quick on the long range master plan, next slide, please. I just wanted to go over what we're doing. So basically what we did is we're taking a long look at this from 2024 to 2032 and we're starting at with where are we at now and we're evaluating our current conditions. And that is a very significant undertaking that the Chief has done a lot of work on, but we're gonna continue to do that. But we're looking at three things. Our distribution of resources, we have a lot of geography to cover with dirt that's becoming houses and businesses on a daily basis. So do we have proper distribution? Concentration based on our risk profile and the type of emergencies we see, can we get the right configuration of resources there in a timely manner? And then reliability, one of the things the Chief discovered early on is our ambulances are overutilized and we're probably gonna need to add one pretty quick. So we're looking at those three things in a very complex fashion, but we're doing that in a way that will give us a good roadmap as to what we need to do currently. Then we're gonna do some predictive analysis and determine what we're gonna look like in 10 years as far as development and businesses and all the different types of risk profiles that we're going to see. And we're gonna be taking that and establishing a number of service delivery triggers. So we know when we need to add something. When can it, when is it financially feasible? When is it operationally a necessity? And so we're gonna be looking at all that future funding strategy. And then from there, we're developing those response strategies and placing stations, people and apparatus. And then based on that, the overarching umbrella is everything is getting modeled for five to seven years forward and three years back. Meaning we want to look at what's happened over the last three years with revenue and with expenditures. And then when Rick and I put together the stuff for the boards, we're gonna say, okay, here's what we're looking at in 2023. Here's the, or 2026, rather, here's the trigger, here's the cost, and here's what it's gonna look like for the next five to seven years. And are they gonna cross? And are we gonna be okay? And do we have those efficiencies and economies of scale? We're gonna look for alternative financing. We're gonna look at grants, which we've had great success with Megan and Sam's help. We're gonna look at whether some sort of enterprise projects make sense for us to make revenue, whether that be vehicle maintenance apparatus, storage of different types of apparatus or even air assets. We've talked to different providers who have an interest in that. So there's a lot of different things we'll be looking at, but those three elements will be overlaid with some financial projections and modeling so that we and you can see how sustainable are we moving into the future based on what's happening? And what are the triggers when we start doing things? We're not just doing it because it feels right. So those are, those are a little bit about our strategy and it really comes down to ending the old way, transitioning to the new way and beginning. And that's what we've done this last year and we're, we're on that road. So, so with that, I'm gonna, I'm stopping, I'm gonna invite up Sam Johnson, who's the Association President. Obviously been working with us and you on this for the last year and with you previous to us being here. Um, he has done an amazing job providing leadership with the troops. And he's also taken a leadership role at the state level because of what, excuse me, what we've been through. So I'll turn it over to, to Sam.
Morning Judge.
Hi Sam.
Commissioners, how are y'all?
Good morning, good to see you again.
Thank you for having me back. So, uh, I look forward to when we're having more fun conversations and we're not bringing up the past anymore, but we're at least in a better place than what we were, so that's always positive. Um, so with everything that's happened over the last 12 months per se, we've really had to spend a lot of time learning about what are ESDs, how do we operate, what are our limitations, what are our vulnerabilities? What we've found is that there's a lot of different areas that define ESDs in certain legislation. And then there's areas that define municipalities and city departments differently than we are. So one of the big things we're working towards, um, with the other ESDs throughout the state and with the State Association is identifying those. Um, we have our legislative session coming up, uh, the sixth and seventh of February. So we'll be looking at what, um, we will be bringing to legislative in 2025 and trying to determine is that, you know, changing language and like 775 to where we're able to remove the 10 cent cap on ESDs and go away from having to have an ESD one and two, so we'll be able to be better funded. When you look at the state and, uh, as a whole and you see that there's multiple ESDs, there's over 300 in the state, how many of them are gonna be capable of holding an election and being successful and overlaying ESD two? Um, it's my opinion that would be pretty minimal for these other ESDs outside of like Travis County and Bear County to be as successful as we've been. So looking at trying to make those types of changes so these other ESDs can be successful and be able to pay their firefighters and their administration a fair wage that would be in accordance with, you know, city municipal firefighters. Cause at the end of the day, we're still providing the same level of work. It's just we're doing it a little bit differently, but the fire trucks are still usually red and the ambulances still have paramedics on them. So, um, that's kind of the big things we're working on from the state side. Um, coming up, we have the safety conference, which I've been asked to speak at and, uh, discuss the, the value of having like a labor side to a administrative relationship and how we can partner and do things together. So looking at the nine individuals that we just hired, those were hired off of the safer grant that we assisted in co-writing for the Fire Department. So the IFF assisted us with that work. So we have grant writers that review our work and then they help us be successful in that. So just joining that value and showing that there is, you know, a, a common goal between labor and administration and having that, uh, constant open door and conversation has led us to be successful as we have. You know, we're looking at the, um, election that we held just a few months ago. It was our partnership with the ESD that I think had led to that, where we were able to advocate in ways that the ESD was able to educate. Um, we got a crash course on PAC work.
Yes.
And I've learned that that is a, uh, its own world in itself. And fortunately I enjoy those things, just like legislative work. Um, but going to, uh, throughout the rest of the year, once we finish up our legislative session, we'll be, uh, going out and working with any of the, um, House Representatives or Senators that oversee areas that we're gonna be addressing changes in legislation and trying to find individuals that are being, um, open to, you know, supporting a bill that we're looking at or asking them to, you know, help endorse on our behalf and help us get things moved forward as we can try and improve the fire service for ESDs and municipalities throughout the state. Because as we've kind of continued to dive into what are ESDs and where are we vulnerable and how do we grow? It's the, the reality is, is the, like... and how do we grow, it's the reality is, is like not every ESD is the same and that the cost effectiveness is different and that we have to kind of take a, you know, pay some special attention to ESDs and make sure that they're getting the same equivalent representation as a city department that, say, the city of Denton where they have HR, a finance director and those items. Multiple ESDs throughout the state have very limited administration throughout them. So that leaves vulnerabilities for the firefighters to be exposed, to be underpaid, or be taken advantage of, so we're looking to try and identify how we can improve those things. And it's always a pleasure to be here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Perfect.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, thank you for all your efforts. I saw you out at the pole advocating for that election, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Judge.
He's becoming a real politician.
He is.
Thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you, buddy.
Judge, thank you so much. Oh, Chief is going to speak. Go ahead. Sorry.
Next slide.
Good morning, Chief.
Oh, okay. I thought you said they were good. No, you got, it's a, oh, okay. This was a, just kind of caveat, there are 350 plus ESDs in the state of Texas, it's just not that many in this area. So, you know, I came to this new, I was not, I'm from municipal government, I wasn't familiar with this, but it is a great, kind of a very optimal, very economy of scale way of running a fire service. So you add that with the fire-based EMS system, and I think we've got probably the most effective, efficient way you could actually run a fire district. So I'm really proud of that. And only about 10% of them actually have overlays, so as Sam discussed, there are some legislative things that will be looked at in the future for that. So next slide. Do I have it?
No, Bobby.
Oh, okay, making sure. I was told someone else would do this, so. Is there a next? Should be next slide. Yeah, should be. Should try to get to my slide. That's another slide. So, buddy.
Next one, Bobby.
Next one? If you can. There we go. Okay, here's what I put.
There it is.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here, Judge, Commissioners. I am so grateful and thankful for what we've overcome last year. A year ago, I was coming to you and kind of describing the situation of what we kind of basically walked into, and I think I use the term, there was a fire and everybody was running towards the fire, including myself, and, you know, it wasn't just me, it was all the firefighters, the community was just running toward that fire the best we can, because that's what we do. Well, I'm here to tell you today, the fire's out, and we're kind of what I would call overhaul, where we're kind of mopping up, make it sure all the spot fires are out, but that's kind of a very fire chief way of saying, look, you know, we've managed this crisis and we're kind of in a different phase of that. There's a lot of way to describe the last year, and there's no way I could go into all the little victories we've had, but the best way I could describe it, it was a, we were having an institutional crisis, an institutional crisis where we had to restructure and with something that would match what our business model needed to be, and I think it was right to go to the citizens, let them vote on that and make them determine their destination on the level of service they wanted. Overwhelmingly, the voice was heard, and now we are, here we are. So it's been a great, it's been a great journey this past year. I'm excited and thankful for that, and so thankful for all the support we've got, but I'm also excited about the future. So how do we move forward? As you can see, and I want you to know, this is hot off the press, this map on the right, we just got that from Denton County GIS, and you're the first governing body to actually get to see that. So it's a new map showing both the ESD one and two. Really, the only difference you're going to notice is if you know where Lantana is, that used to have a little border around it, and then basically they're actually within the district now too. So it's kind of neat that you're getting to see that. We just got that, so I thought it was important to show that. We do have, we're doing a lot of little things like that you don't think about, like we're getting a new logo, we have to have something. I didn't think that was a big deal, but when you look at your EIN number for your tax purposes, you have to have a letterhead with a logo. So little things like that are having to take place. The board is, has been sworn in, and we're working those things as far as them identifying their attorneys, their banks, and stuff like that. So a lot of baby steps at the beginning, but we're starting to build that structure. As I said, last year was more of an institutional crisis. We are now transitioning to what I call filling in the operational gaps, and we didn't have a lot of opportunity last year to focus on the operations because we're so busy, you know, figuring out our infrastructure. So we're now starting to do that, and the interesting thing is after the election, there's only so much we could do. We didn't have a new board that hadn't been appointed, can't even figure out the tax rate, none of that stuff has, can't be done yet. So what can we do? So we've been really kind of doing a lot of research, and the way we've done that is used a lot of teamwork, just because that's how we've done all our successes, is I've developed about six committees, and the reason there's only six is because I can only manage so many of them, and so to be honest, span and control, but, but most of those committees revolve around two topics, and most of that is capital needs. You know, we've got a lot of equipment that's aged, that needs to be replaced, we've got some growth issues, we've got, and not just firings, I mean, equipment, I mean, equipment that's dilapidated, needs to be replaced. And also looking at personnel staffing and things like that, and what do we need to grow? What are our weaknesses, as Sam discussed, what are our vulnerabilities? Those type of things we're looking at. So I've got some committees working on that to do that research, look at some planning as we start looking at our master plan and our three to five year plan. So they're going to bring in recommendations, I kind of chair all of those and be a part of those, but that's a big part of it. And the other part is what the president referred to is the video audits. Obviously, we got the large comprehensive, the who, what, when, where, that was ongoing. We also got one that's really more of a best practices, look at our procedures and controls, how do we keep these things from happening again? So we're going to be looking to implement it though. We expect to get those results and recommendations from them probably later this month, so we're looking to implement those. But we take all that information, we take those recommendations and that research, and we start developing, well, we've already kind of already started on our master plan, looking at the long term, and as you try to predict the crystal ball, you know, you can't, the farther out you go, the less likely, it's just kind of a, it's kind of a goals and objectives. From that, we will develop our three and five year plan as more short term, how can, this is the things we need to work on right now, and we'll prioritize those. And we'll take those to the boards for their direction. Next slide. So one of the ways we do that, you know, we can come up with all these plans, we can identify our concerns and vulnerabilities, we come up with these plans, but you have to have benchmarks. You have to have benchmarks of when do you implement that, right? When do, yeah, we can say we're going to build a station in, you know, X, Y, Z, you know, whatever, but when does that happen? So what we've done is, since I've been here, probably within the first couple of months, I sent all our key stakeholders in the communities, the mayors, and the city managers and town managers, I send them monthly data reports and how we're doing. Some of that is selfish, so I can see what we're doing operationally, say, you know, what are our call volumes, what is our distribution of calls? And so with that, we've also come up, this past January, I did an end of year report. So the end of year report kind of gives me a look at the whole year and looking at. So you use that data as your benchmarks, right? When you start seeing that your call volume on your ambulances, you have 31% of reoccurring calls, where I've got multiple calls going out once, and most of our calls are EMS, that tells me we need more ambulance. So you use that data. But the other important piece of that is not just the data, probably the more important and the thing that's got us through this past year is the relationships. You work with your relationships, you work with your community. I've had a couple of meetings with developers who are coming and building these large neighborhoods. We need to be engaged in conversations with them. They're looking at land opportunities and maybe helping us out with building future fire stations. So those are also triggers and benchmarks we look at, what opportunities are out there that we can seize and leverage to our advantage. So those two things really kind of the things I want to touch on, the things that I'm looking for when we come up with a master plan and even a three to five year plan, you got to look, what are your benchmarks that you can fiscally responsibly do it in an effective way? And I think the way we've managed this past year is through the success of working together, and I think that's how we'll get to the next year and beyond. So with that, next slide, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Judge.
Throw it ahead.
I don't have a question. I just would like to remark how far you and we have come in the last 12 months. It's been amazing. I am so proud of you guys. You jumped in to the fire, not knowing if there was going to be a fire extinguisher. And so you've done great. I enjoyed hearing all the good things that you have done and the things that you've got planned for the future. So thank you very, very much for being here.
Commissioner, I'm glad you mentioned for us to put this on the agenda because it, I've known about some of this, but not all of it, and I just want to thank you all for your leadership. I want to thank all these board members, past and present, that are here. Thank you all for all y'all's efforts to right the ship, and y'all have done exactly that. And Commissioner, I want to thank you for all your efforts, and I know Commissioner Mitchell, you've been helping as well for identifying and recruiting qualified, competent board members this last year, the last fall and in the first part of the year, and then working with them. So, and congratulations on the election. I've said that publicly, we supported that, and I'm glad the voters supported that as well. It's a new day in service delivery, and you have a good financial stream to make sure that you're maintaining and advancing your service levels. So especially as we're growing counties, so I just want to commend you all publicly for y'all's great efforts. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, I forgot one important thing. Y'all had a very unusual rescue the other day, and I want to make sure everybody knows that we have, with our EDS, we have, ESD, pardon me, we have saved a bovine who fell through the ice in one of our communities, and they pulled this cow out, got her warm, and she's fine. And, you know, we don't think about things like that that our firemen do for the community. So thanks.
Four-legged rescue.
They did a horse in 2021, so.
That's true.
All we got left was a sheep or something.
Exactly, exactly. Keep working through the list. Did you have anything to add? Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Appreciate all the hard work.
All right, good. Thank you all for your efforts. Yes, good news. Great work in a short amount of time. All right, let's go to item 3H. This is a presentation by Marathon Health through the progress and engagement of the My Family Health Clinic for plan years 2021 through 2023 and any appropriate action. And Gustavo, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, we have Marathon Health here to do a presentation of the involvement of the clinic, the pros and cons, the good news about the clinic being in place for all our county employees. I'm going to pass it to Derek Brown, Client Development Director for Marathon Health. He's going to introduce his team, and we are here to answer any questions. Before I do that, I want to acknowledge Tony Rose and Tony Luton from Denton County. They are hands-on with Marathon Clinic.
Perfect, good. Tony and Tony. All right, good. Thank you all.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Hi.
Derek Brown, I now serve VP Market Development with Marathon Health. I know myself and a former colleague had many ongoing discussions with you, both in the Commissioners' Court as well as off-premise in the past. You know, we have some of our senior leadership here as well with Marathon, as we have a follow-up meeting with Gustavo and his HR team to kind of review our success, kind of strategies going forward. So thank you again for the time today. You all took on an endeavor with us, you know, in the most impeccable time, right? Late fall of 2020, you know, as we began discussions, and then, you know, fall of 2021 where we opened our partnership with the My Health Family Clinic. So, you know, Marathon Health is a national leader in primary care, acute service, behavioral health therapy, and another array of services that are really brought to the work site. In DFW, we're up to eight municipal groups, and then you all serving as the, you know, the sole county for us. So truly appreciate the partnership you brought. It's definitely carried our name across the state of Texas as well. So Holly Allen is going to be doing most of the presenting today for us, you know, as we share kind of an update over the past two and a half years now that we've had the privilege to partner with Denton County. So she'll kind of talk to you about where we started at, where we've, you know, seen utilization, member outcomes, and, you know, total client savings come out. So thank you all, and feel free to pose any questions.
Perfect, good. Thank you. Good morning, Holly.
Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for the time today. I know you have a packed agenda as usual, so I really appreciate it. I'll be super brief, but feel free to stop me if you do have any questions, okay? So I'm Holly Allen, Regional Director with Marathon Health. I manage and support the team at the My Family Health Clinic here in Denton, as well as several other sites throughout Texas and across the West Region of the United States, and work super closely with Tony Rose. She's been such an advocate for us, and we joked earlier, I think we communicate on a daily basis at this point, either strategizing about something or, you know, just updating information. So thank you for that. Just a few key metrics. I know you probably have a presentation. Don't worry, I'm not going through that whole thing. I know there's a lot of information there. We just wanted you to have it for your reference. So a few key pieces I'll touch on today. Member utilization, we're at about a 33% employee engagement rate. So of the eligible employees to utilize the health clinic, about 33% of the employees specifically have utilized within the last 18 months. You can see the patient satisfaction information here as well. 99% of patients that completed a satisfaction survey after a provider visit reported that they were satisfied or very satisfied with their care. Another metric that I love to share that's not on this page is patients report that they receive either the same or higher quality of care at our health clinic than they do in the community. We actually have 99% of patients reporting that. So that's essentially all of the patients that completed their surveys state that the quality of care they receive is better than what they get in the community. You can see the other kind of key piece we like to focus on is patients getting healthier. That's sort of what we do, that's our model of care. 80% of patients that have an at-risk biometric measure are making progress and improving that measure. It actually comes out to over 350 specific individual people that are making improvement on at least one of those biometric measures. We give a ton of credit to Chris Kyle, who's our medical provider at the health clinic. She does a great job engaging patients in their medical care. The other piece that I would say behavioral health is a service that we offer at the health center as well. We have had over 500 behavioral health visits since the clinic opened in 2021. That behavioral health provider is only half-time, so she works 20 hours a week, whereas the clinic's open for 40. So even with that partial availability, to still have 500 visits completed throughout the course of the contract thus far. Those were sort of the key points I really wanted to touch on. Obviously, you have additional information here. Do you have any questions for us or any additional information we can share with you?
Yeah, I've got a question, Judge, if you don't mind.
Stick right ahead.
Obviously, you're a very large organization, you've dealt with a lot of municipalities and other counties across the country. What's your recommendation to get our participation level higher? Okay, we're at 33%. Obviously, we want to have as much as possible. Why are we not doing more, and what is your suggestion? So one's, I don't consider it a problem, but I, you know, I consider that a little low for me. How do we get that participation level higher?
Yeah, I agree, and that's something that Tony and Chris and I are communicating about consistently. We have an annual engagement plan that we put in place that includes lunch and learns. Chris, our medical provider, and our behavioral health provider present at those lunch and Chris, our medical provider, and our behavioral health provider present at those lunch and learns. They attend new hire orientation every week now, or every time you have it anyway, to present about the clinic. Here's the services we offer. Um, we're also doing off-site visits now. We just started that with our anniversary event last fall where we're going to where your employees are. We know that not everyone can come out to various events that we have on site, so we're going to meet people where they're at, providing that information, making sure they're aware. We also do a lot of outreach, and this is something that Chris and I have talked a lot about, sort of focusing on, who are those high-risk populations? Patients that have out-of-range biometric measures that are gonna be a more, a higher claim spend for the county. So we're outreach-ing to those patients. Have they had a visit? Did they have an out-of-range A1C that needs to be rechecked? So that's just a handful of the things that we're focusing on, but, um, I agree, and that's an area of opportunity for us as we move forward. We're open to ideas, and Gustavo too is super engaged in all of those efforts as well.
Okay, excellent. So I, I see we have a very high satisfactory rate, uh, which is excellent, can sometimes be construed, um, or, or confused with, what are we not offering? Or where can we, where are the 33% that are coming? I would like to know where they feel like we could improve, or is there something they don't feel like we're offering? For the other, uh, percentage of, of folks, and so where are we missing the boat? Is there something that we're falling off in? And again, it's, it's, it's hard to extract that information sometimes from a, from an employee because they don't want to be the naysayer of the problem. But we need to embrace this very openly. We're not, we're not here to upset anybody. We're just really trying to offer the best coverage that we possibly can for our employees. Um, I mean, my, my family's used it multiple times.
Good.
So, so I, I understand the process, and, and I did, we don't have any issues or any concerns. But obviously, I want to make sure that most of our employees are at least giving us an opportunity. And I think that, uh, you definitely have to go to them and educate, uh, because to expect them to come to use, you know, for information is, is a lot more difficult. You know, people have jobs and they're busy, and as soon as their job's done, they want to go home with their family, and I can appreciate that, so.
Yeah. No, that's a great point, and I think that's something that we can sort of think about. And we've done, I know with other clients, a separate sort of survey. Exactly where we'll say, if you haven't used the clinic, why not? If you have, what's missing? What can we do better? So if that's something you're interested in, we can absolutely do that.
And I think maybe we could look at the other public entities and where they were 18 months in. And I think, I think it's a very good, I think it's a very good point. We could kind of see, and what were their best practices that they were doing to increase engagement? You know, and I've, I don't know if we can, um, gather that or not, but I'm curious which, and we've talked about this before, Gustavo, because I've asked about it. The, um, is there other, is there departments that are utilizing it more than others? Are there, are there some departments that were just not even, they're not doing, having any utilization that we can maybe have a tailored approach to them? You know, maybe it's by geography, or there might be some other reasons for resistance that we can kind of break down those barriers and make sure that we're fully representing our full, uh, employee population base. There's lots of different departments in the county.
We've been able to gather that information by department. We show engagement by department. And so we can see who are the high utilizers and who are the lower utilizers. We just, within the last month or two, updated the eligibility file, so we now see that.
Okay, we can get that now. Okay, because we've talked about this in the past, and we did not have it. And I was like, I wish we could see.
We, I would love to see that at some point.
Yeah, it's there now.
Judge, oh, I think there's one thing that is very encouraging though, and that is that you had a 49%, almost a 50% increase in your visit volume in just one year.
Yes.
So I think we're definitely on the right track.
Right.
I appreciate all the suggestions and comments for increasing that, but I think that's a pretty amazing number myself, a brand-new program to have, you know, a 50% increase over your first year.
Yeah, I agree, absolutely. And I think that's something we have to keep in mind, is it is a new program essentially. You know, a lot of our other sites, maybe it's new to Marathon Health, but they had a clinic with a different vendor previously. And so the team members, the employees are used to sort of having that service available, whereas it's, it's completely new here, so, yeah.
And Judges and Commissioners, Gustavo, you probably know about this yet. I'll be bringing in Q2 likely most of our current client base, uh, in the DFW area as well as a few prospective cities that we're meeting with right now. Kind of a best-sharing forum. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell, you may recall this from a few years ago when we did it over at Lewisville City Hall. So a similar version of that, but really, you know, we have several who are looking to share access with one another, um, looking at strategies three, five years down the road. So I think that's gonna be a great forum to get some of these ideas out as well.
Judge?
Just a quick, uh, well, um, I'm glad to hear that you're going to the employees. One of the things, um, the two government centers that are in my precinct are over 30 minutes from your, your clinic, right? And we have that with several. And I know that the bulk of our employees are here, and that's good, but, um, I hear a lot about not just the clinic, but other things that feeling a little left out sometimes, right? That everything tends to be concentrated here. But I think that, um, going out to them and, and helping with that is, is gonna be helpful. I also think you're doing some virtual things now, right?
Yeah.
And maybe everybody knows that, but I don't know if they all know that, right? And so, um, that doesn't matter where you are geographically, right? So I think that's a good thing to help promote that as well and, and get that. And, and I think once you start to get a relationship, then the 30 minutes, if you have to, is probably less of an issue. But getting there the first time is like, it's a long way to go. I, I did have a question on your engagement. Um, the 11% spouse and 9% dependent, that is the percentage of spouses who are in the plan, who are actually using, right, is, okay, not the 11% of the 33?
Right, 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 yeah. The 33 is just employees.
Got it. Perfect, okay. And we just had a special guest, Commissioner Marcher showed up. Hello, you.
Yeah.
He was, he was instrumental in bringing this program forward, so thank you, Ron. And I'm glad to see you this morning.
If I could, uh, Judge and Commissioners, um, Larry Morrissey with Marathon Health. I'm a former mayor myself. I was the mayor of the city of Rockford, Illinois for 12 years, 2005 to 2017. I now help run our public sector practice nationally. Um, we've got roughly 400,000 eligible members in the public sector across the nation. Just a little bit of perspective, because I am blessed to be able to participate in meetings like this across the country. You're doing really well for where you're at in your, um, stage of development. We're just getting our 2023 data put together. We'll be hosting some virtual town halls where all of our public sector customers are invited. We'll hold two benchmarking sessions this year, virtually. You would be welcome to attend, and your team can attend. We will be able to see kind of how are we matching up against our peers nationally? When I was in office and we hired Marathon Health to run our clinic, that's how I first got introduced to Marathon. The first thing I was asking is, hey, who's best? How do I get there? And, um, Commissioner Williams, I believe you have a career in law enforcement as a reserve officer. I appreciate your service and, uh, appreciate the questions that you ask. And the data that we're getting by department, super important. What you'll see, though, in some of that data, some of the hardest-to-engage members are oftentimes first responders. Big reason why I'm in this career today is because the challenge we had getting the best health that we possibly could to our first responders. From a leadership standpoint, speaking the way you are, getting the message out, super important, especially in first responder community, that word of mouth. They either trust you or they don't oftentimes. And so to the extent, just stay consistent with these engagement strategies and then just think particularly, is there something that in corrections we could do from a hour's standpoint? Um, is there certain positions that it's just hard for them to get in? And then, once they've established a relationship, Commissioner Falconer, the virtual care is an absolute great way to go. That's how I receive my care. My primary care is virtual through Marathon Health. Employer gives it to us for free. But it's sometimes difficult to get that first appointment. So just overall, really good work and progress. The team's doing a phenomenal job. Holly's doing a phenomenal job. I'm able to sit in on a lot of these monthly calls and just kind of, um, measure the progress. I'm also executive sponsor for the group. Anytime we can be of service, I can be of service. Please let us know.
Appreciate that, sir.
Perfect, good.
Um, you know, thi- this is, this is excellent information, the page that, that does give the breakdown, and it's, obviously, the retirees can come at any point in ti- uh, page eight gives you the breakdown of, of the, of the utilization.
Right.
And, um, that's, you know, one of the, one of our highest, the third highest one is the gel, uh, which is phenomenal. And, uh, you know, you go back to law enforcement, the sheriff's department is still a pretty high utilization compared to the rest of them. We've got some very low, uh, some very low ones, public facilities, um, which, um, should be a little higher. And so, um, I think it's.
Maybe they're healthy. They're super healthy.
Yeah, that's what it is. Great job over there. I'm just kidding. No, I think this is imperative because I would like to talk about, I would like to have this kind of information to sit with our directors and say, hey, look, you know, this is an initiative for us. It's, you know, we're, we, we're self-ensured, and we need to, to, to lower costs. This is a way to do it, is to do as much in-house as we possibly can. As long, and I'm not, we don't want to force anybody to do anything. But we want them to give us a shot. Give us a chance, you know?
And Commissioner Williams, I think part of that, you're speaking to first responders' location, right?
Yeah.
So it's kind of flip-flop. Where this clinic was, it didn't appeal to what our normal audience was.
Sure.
Because it's gonna be kind of geographically in the middle of an area where most of the residents live, work, et cetera, like we have in Lewisville, Capella, Colony, uh, City of Denton, other groups.
Right.
Uh, but here, like, we, we hit the more hard-to-reach and the more prime audience first. So now it's getting to that other population.
Well, and some of these folks, bottom line, ju- just, uh, Commissioner, uh, to Kevin over here, he, he's right. There's, there's, uh, certain areas we're just not gonna be able to get because it's not convenient. And that's okay. But the telehealth type mentality, that will help us. So there, again, it goes back to education and making sure they understand what 100% is available to them. So nevertheless, I've taken enough of your time. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we, we mentioned this in our new hire letter that goes out to everybody, says welcome, you know, to, to the county, and, you know, they do it in the, in the employee orientations every Wednesday morning, and so it's just, it's multiple messages, multiple times, and in multiple different ways, and then tailoring it for the audiences, and so I want to.
I think it's great.
It's just an ongoing effort. Members, are there other questions y'all may have? Are y'all good? Kevin, y'all good?
Yeah, very good.
All right, good. Thank you all for being here. Thank y'all for what y'all do. All right. Let's go back to the, oh, well, all right. Let's go back to the beginning. We have our consent agenda, and there is revised language for item two F. There's revised language on the order maker, which I'll be happy to read. But do we have a, which is just clarifying the, the spirit of the agreement, which is just kind of adding additional clarification? I will go ahead and read that, and then we could consider, is there any other items which I would like to pull potentially for, uh, the consent agenda? Okay, I'll go ahead and read this as clarity, and then we can do a motion for approval of the entire consent agenda. This is, um, item two F is approval of the 2024 building use request from Keith Kopp with Denton County Farmers Market to use the historical park parking lot between Mulberry Street and Sycamore Street along Carroll Boulevard in Denton, Texas to market produce and food products, either grown, produced, or raised by Denton County Farmers Market Association members from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM every Saturday, including Tuesdays and Thursdays, seasonally during the growing season, beginning April the 1st, 2024 through November the 30th, 2024. So that's the revised language for, for clarity. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move.
With a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order-making appointments and the appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the intra-departmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budget memory request 100560 for the Public Health Facilities Department to transfer $13,135 from Facilities Management miscellaneous county buildings maintenance with $4,000 to equipment rental to fund the rental of earthmoving equipment, and $9,135 to Holcher Building janitorial supplies to fund additional janitorial services and any appropriate action. Item two D is approval of budget memory request 100600 for the Public Facilities Department to transfer $11,000 from Precinct for Governor's Center Water Service to the Corralsland Square Water Service to fund emergency leak repairs. Item two E is approval of the 2024 building use request for Denton Community Market to use the Denton County's Historical Park on Tuesdays, on Saturdays, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. March 2nd through December the 24th, 2024, to hold artisans' produce and local food market where vendors can sell directly to customers along with community activities and, and appropriate action. We already did the amended language for item two F. And item two G is approval of the Road Superintendent Report for the month of December 2023. This is presented for recording purposes only. All right, we'll go and skip three A and B towards the end of the meeting. Let's go to item five A. This is approval of bill report, payments from CSUD Community Corrections, TAIIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, interest, and, uh, forfeiture, forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May?
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of the renewal of RFP 202616, transportation of human remains to Howard Mortuary and North Sin Texas crematory services.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of renewal of RFP 222726, janitorial services to CTJ Maintenance Incorporated. Any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven, uh, six C, approval to dispose of abandoned inmate property compliance with two, Chapter 263152A3 of the Local Government Code for Disposition of Surplus and Texas Code of Criminal Procedure 18, colon, 18.17, and any appropriate action.
To approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of specifications and authority to advertise RFP 232777, the CMAR Denton County Courts Build and Expansion and Remodel and Appointments of Evaluation Committee to include Holly Zaloski, Chief Administrator, County Judge Chris Lansky, Construction Coordinator, Public Facilities Kevin Falconer, County Commissioner Precinct Two Chris Matheson, Facility Division Manager, Public Facilities, and Larry Harbor, District Court Administrator, District Court Administration, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, uh, approval to authorize the Purchasing Department to issue an RFP for a classification and compensation study and performance management analysis. And I don't know if this is Gustavo or Scott. Item, okay, I'll go ahead.
So Gust- Gustavo talked to us about putting the RFP out for this. Uh, and through the discussion we had, we felt like Commissioners' Court needed to authorize us to put this, issue this RFP before we move forward with, with spending two, three weeks writing a set of specifications for that. So we're requesting approval to move forward with that process.
Yeah, before, this is obviously a project I'm working on. Before we continue going forward, obviously, we need to have, uh, you know, we want to have some support before we put any time and energy into it. The last thing I want to do is have the Budget Office put three weeks into something, and, um, it doesn't make sense because no one else was interested in it, and take time away from other things, if that makes sense, because they already are overloaded, if you will. So, so I actually asked them to put it on.
Thank you. So I, I think it's a discussion item.
Well, it's a motion to approve, to put the RFP together.
So. I'm, I'm good with it?
What did you say? You know, to you, for discuss, with a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Um, Joe, what, do you want to give me, there was not any background on previous court action for, we did this before and so forth, and so on, the agenda placement. So we got three new court members, and so I think it's important that we walk the court through what we did last time, uh, to, to brief them about that. I think that would be, and the size and scope of this, you know, is this the whole, and I agree with your comment. There's labor involved on drafting something if there's not support for it. But there's also, to put the county through this, this is very time-consuming for all of our elected officials, all the department heads, and then the staff doing it. So it's, 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 it's labor-intensive. So we got, is this county-wide? Is this a narrow focus with a couple of departments, some, some areas that we're having recruiting?
I can answer that. You know, as we had a discussion, we did a, uh, presentation to, to try to understand what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, as you guys are aware, we haven't done anything since 2008, and, and so I think that we're way behind the eight ball on getting to see a picture of where we are. Uh, we've discussed with our other counties, sister counties, and, uh, most of them do it every five years. Tarrant, or, you know, Tarrant County actually has them, uh, where they do a spot check every year. Um, so I think that, uh, it shows that, that we haven't taken the time to, to look at this again, and I'm not saying it's for any reason, whatever. I understand it was kind of a difficult process last time. Um, I think the way we would look at this is put an RFP out for what we're looking to accomplish, but then segment it, uh, a, a specific area to make sure that how well the, the performance goes and how well things operate, so we don't open up, you know, another situation like it sounds like you had in 2008, where, um, at the end of it, it was more of a, it doesn't seem like we got what we were really looking for. And again, I, I wasn't there, but I'm just going by what I've been told and what I've heard. So this is just more of a, you know, we have to start the ball. Ball has to start rolling somewhere. And obviously, at some point in time, you know, the Commissioners' Court can stop anything they want to at any time. So, but, but, you know, we gotta start somewhere, so that's what this is about.
Okay.
I think the naysayers of the 2008, uh, Ryan, is that everybody didn't get what they wanted and what they were looking for. So I don't think it was a bad, uh, idea. I just think people had different opinions.
Yeah, and you're gonna get that with, no matter who you bring in. Yeah, you're, the results are not always gonna be favorable. And there's gonna be some results that we're probably gonna see, we're gonna go, uh-oh, we don't like that. But I just want to see the information so we can make good decisions. It's hard to run a county this large without having some really good information coming from the outside. Somebody that really doesn't have any, you know, skin in the game other than giving us a good analysis of where we are, what we've got going on. I, I know, with doing a lot of the research, I feel pretty confident. We're, we're doing a phenomenal job. But there's always, uh, good things to have for checks and balances, and to update some things that we've had, uh, you know, some descriptions, job descriptions that we've had forever that probably need to be updated. And so this is not an easy process. This is a lengthy, and you're right, Judge, it's, it's very time-consuming. Um, but for me, in my opinion, I think it's a necessity.
May I ask a question too?
Absolutely.
So, um, because I, I support, uh, the philosophy definitively, but I think we talked, or maybe there was, uh, that we could, when this RFP is done, it would allow like a pilot first, um, not necessarily doing the entire, uh, group right off the bat because we can learn something from a, potentially a pilot. Is that something that we could have in?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's absolutely what I would suggest, just because it is a new venture. And, and the RFP would specify that this is not a blanket opportunity across, this is. it. This is, you know, we're gonna get our, we're gonna get to, we're gonna take a date first before we decide to get married.
Yeah.
And through that process, we as commissioners and others can, can decide if this is the right direction, it's the right company for us. We may be like the direction, but maybe it's the wrong company, and we can always then have the option of pulling back and going to, you know, whatever legally allows us to do it, whether we have to put it back out, or we go to the next company in line. So, but no, this is not a blanket opportunity to go and start with everybody. I think that's a huge undertaking.
Right. Very good.
Not saying that companies aren't accustomed to that, but I have no problem dipping our toe in the water before we dive headfirst into shallow water. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I think it's time.
Yeah, great.
I think that I supported the last one that we did back in '08, you know. Fundamentally, I think it's an ongoing process of the HR department. I would just say that for the record. I believe this is an HR function that y'all should be doing annually and updating and quarterly, whether you're dividing out the, the labor force. You know, I think the Commissioners Court has done a good job over the years of identifying segments of our population where we, where we needed to focus on, and we needed to update those, and we needed to look at the pay scale, whether it be road and bridge, truck drivers, or our healthcare workers in the jail, or, you know, just different segments, you know, most recently what we've done with our law enforcement. And we drilled down, and we did it internally. You know, we looked, we looked at other, the other pay scales of all our competing agencies and updated and refreshed things. And so I'm not opposed to us having a firm do it. I've said before, I think it needs to be done incrementally, and I appreciate y'all's that we're unity of thought about that as far as looking at that. I think we could identify that as the RFP comes forward, and we, and we'd be thinking about in the meantime, which, which, which departments
Right.
do we want to focus on first, which makes sense, and then see how that goes, and then we could implement, implement that more broadly. If you recall back in the budget conversations of this last summer, you know, one of the issues that we were dealing with was outstanding issue with the last study that came forward. And it could be a difference of opinion, as you mentioned, Commissioner.
Yes.
It could be like someone didn't get what they wanted to, so they thought it was faulty.
Right.
But, you know, but it's important that, that the time and effort and resources spent on this, that it's done in a very thoughtful manner, and I think an incremental approach would be, would be ideal.
Yeah. It's a rollout approach.
And then how are y'all defining performance management analysis? What does that mean?
Basically, Commissioner, Judge, what we are trying to accomplish with this is for the company to come and tell us, hey, there may be a better way to do a performance evaluation for your employees. Maybe you can switch to do pay for performance.
Kind of like, it's a compensation. Just, just giving us options on different types of compensation. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, but just giving, because the way we're doing it may be great, but there may be other options out there that we're not aware of. And I, and I don't want us to go into it giving them a specific expectation of what we want. I want them to come and say, here's what we've seen, here's what we feel may fit good for you, here's a couple options, so we can make a decision as a body instead of, this is not one of those that I want them to look at one or two of us and think we're driving the boat of exactly what we want. This needs to be, we're open minded, we're ready to look at what options are available and pick what best fits us.
Yeah.
Not, not a specific model, if you will, when it comes to compensation. And they may say what we're doing is great, maybe give some ideas on how to tweak it, or if there is a pay for performance type deal that we can utilize, that may not be in every, every category, you know. But again, we, we don't know what we don't know, and I would love to see all those options that they have that's available and what's been successful for other counties as well.
Perfect. Okay.
Very good.
All right, any other comments?
I'm sorry, Judge, did that answer your question?
It did. It did. It did. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So I will look forward to y'all bringing that back.
Yes, thank you.
You bet. All right. Six F is approval of award of RFP two three dash two seven nine zero Briarwood wastewater treatment plant operations and maintenance services to us Water Services Corporation. Any appropriate action?
This is something that has to be done since we're, this Briarwood wastewater treatment?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, the chair move for approval.
Okay. I'll second it.
Can I have just a question? Yeah. So, because I'd heard that it's possible that we might, because of the very limited flow, that we might not actually have to run the plant right now. And so I think, if I'm not mistaken, Scott, that if we find that kind of thing out, we, we have some out on this potentially, or some, something, so that we, we don't have to commit to something if we, if we find out some further information.
Right. If we, if we award this, we can give thirty days written notice to stop their services.
Which makes me feel good about that.
If for some reason we don't need those.
Well, we're not gonna be using it right now anyway. I had a request that, for someone to use it, and I told them that we weren't ready, so there won't be anybody after.
Operable right now, yeah.
Yeah.
So that way we're not, if, if it is, if we do find that we don't really have to operate the plant for the, for the time being, we're not gonna be committing to this, we'll have it, we'll have an out to basically say we...
Yes. Yes, I think with, with the way the contract is, or the language in the RFP was, was that we could, we can cancel it within thirty days. I think we can negotiate to delay services.
Okay.
And not completely cancel the, the contract and stop that for a period of time. And then if ten months later, we decide that we, they want to start that system back up, then we will have a contractor in place that we can just, we can go back online with. But that would be some negotiations with that vendor at that time.
Good. I think it's just good, and Jody may have...
And just mainly from an operational standpoint, it's, it's a mandatory situation with TCQ. If we lessen the amount of, of visits out there, I still think you'd have to visit it. It's some, maybe not daily, maybe it's, maybe it's weekly, maybe it's twice by, by monthly. But I think somehow we'd have to have something because of TCQ's licensed facility that they would say, you have to go look at it at least this amount of time.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
No, it sounds like the organization that is getting this award is, is willing to work with us in multiple total ways, because when I read it, it gave us an eight month, the original, first part of the contract's eight months with obviously five one-year extensions. So, no, that's, that's good.
All right, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is under budget is approval of the budget memory request one zero zero five five zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures in amount of seventy-six thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars for salary assistance benefits and various line items for the Disease Intervention Specialist Grant.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of the budget memory request one zero zero five seven zero for the County Clerk's Collections Department to roll over one thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars from the fiscal year 2023 fiscal, to fiscal year 2024 for technology software services due to biliary, any appropriate action.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budget memory request one zero zero five eight zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for various operating line items for the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Direct Adult Drug Court Veterans Court grant in amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand and sixteen dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of budget memory request one zero zero five nine zero for the Public Facilities Department to transfer fifty-nine thousand from facilities management maintenance management to equipment capital to fund emergency heating and cooling equipment for the Marion Jimhorn Government Center.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Just a quick, just a quick thing. I just really want to thank our facilities, because I understand that, that we, we had the emergency and it was put in place, and my understanding is it's helped a lot, and so we appreciate that very quick action.
Yeah, great job, guys.
Thank you.
Everybody. There was a lot of people involved in making that happen.
Absolutely.
So quickly. So, great job.
Hopefully it'll...
We showed that government can actually move quicker than people think.
Yeah.
Sometimes. Don't count on that every time.
That's right. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six one zero for the County Communications to transfer ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars from county promotion with one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to technology equipment and eight thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars to technology software service for purchase of video and podcast equipment for digital software.
Still...
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six two zero for the Office of Emergency Management Homeland Security Grant to increase revenues and allocate expenditures in amount of sixteen thousand to fund the purchase of a fire extinguisher training system.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six three zero to roll over funds from the fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024 for the 2023 tax notes for building projects in amount of fourteen million eight hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The funds were not expended prior to the end of the fiscal year. We need to roll over for the new fiscal year.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven H, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six four zero for the County Jail to transfer three hundred and eighty-three, three hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars from the salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and human resources overtime policy as recommended by the Budget Office for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the State Commission on Jail Standards.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven I, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six five zero for the Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Facility to transfer fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars from administrative equipment to capital equipment to cover the cost of replacing two ice water dispensers that have become inoperable.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven J, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six six zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures to the fiscal year 2024 COVID-19 Health Disparities Grant in amount of one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars for salary assistance benefits and sixty-four thousand for contract labor, and six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for various line items for a total amendment one hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. This grant will cover two community health workers and one communication coordinator to assist with COVID-19 Health Disparities Initiative. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Got a question, Judge.
Yes.
So when, when, are these funds that were obviously given to us in the past, or is this funds we're about to receive already?
Both.
Both, a little bit of both.
Do you want to speak to this?
And I guess the other question is, is why are we still, COVID-19, what's the, I mean, I just need to understand how that works.
Handle this one, Juan.
Yeah, because obviously, we're not having a COVID crisis anymore, so.
That's right. I called and spoke to Dr. Richardson the other day. He was gonna be here today. He could not be here this morning.
No problem.
If we need further clarification, we can, we can wait till next week.
I'm sure I'll hear plenty right here.
Sure, no, I know Dr. Richardson, which he could be here. We could definitely table anything till next week in case you do need more clarification. These are the extension of the funds that we already had, so we're just continuing the positions as they are. You might, you're gonna see it again, listed two items down, as we move money from one year to the next, and then to the next.
Gotcha.
So really, it's just a continuation of those funds that do exist with us already, and we're just moving them forward.
So these are funds that we probably earmarked before.
Exactly. There's nothing new. This is a, kind of basically a cleanup as we're moving forward.
Gotcha, no problem. Okay, thank you.
The grant years and as they switch over.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. All right, good question. I called and asked him the same thing Thursday.
I should have called him up.
It's all, it's all good. No, it's, it's meetings are four. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven K, approval of budget memory request one zero zero six seven zero for Emergency Management Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative Grant to increase revenues and allocate expenditures in amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand to fund the purchase of three mobile surveillance trailers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven L, approval of budget amendment request one zero two six eight zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year 2023 COVID-19 Health Disparities Grant in amount of one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars for salary assistance benefits and sixty-four thousand for contract labor and six thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars for various MNO line items for a total amendment one hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. This grant will fund the two community health workers and one communication coordinator with, to assist with the COVID-19 Health Disparities Initiative. This is a similar concept that we talked about.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, this is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, we have two promotions in the district attorney's office, two promotions in the district clerk, one new hired in JP number one, one new hired in juvenile probation, one rehired in juvenile probation, two promotions in juvenile probation, one new hired in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the sheriff's office.
I'll be there.
That new hired is the detention officer.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next is item eight B, discussion approval of dates for the quarterly service awards luncheon. And I believe you sent us an email, Gustavo, regarding that. Members, did y'all have a opportunity to look at the dates?
Yes, sir.
And Judge, if I may, I only put these dates trying to lay out the plan for the full year. I understand that this is too far in advance.
It is.
But at least if you can give me a date for the first service luncheon, that would be great.
I think that July first may be problematic for, due to the holidays and so forth, and so I think it might be lightly attended, and we want to make sure our employees are there as much as possible. So what was your date for the next one?
Oh, I'm trying to find it. I'm sorry, Judge. I'm sorry, Judge, I lost the page. April first.
I don't know what it is.
Monday?
April first is, yeah, it's April Fool's Day.
Yeah.
April first is the...
Yeah, that, that date looks good with me. I don't know about the other members.
I like Monday dates.
Yeah, Mondays are always a good day.
All of these, by the way, are Mondays. And we, I tried to put these on a week that we don't have a holiday or anything like that, or that particular day.
It's not a set date. It's, it's because of holidays and some of our conferences and so forth.
So.
It's good.
Y'all fine with April the first?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think you can send us an email about the other dates, and we could probably respond, but look at the availability for the July.
Yes, sir.
So.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
We can go ahead and give you, give you, do we want a motion for that? Okay, we have a motion for April the first with Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Judge, just to clarify, you just want an email for the next event? You will just let me know. You don't want another placement for that, do you?
I don't think that's necessary personally, but...
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, next. Eight C is approval of the deletion of slot zero zero two CV, Communication Coordinator Pay seven slot zero zero three CV Records Analyst One to Pay Grade Six in the Creation of Assistant Program, Coordinator Pay Grade Seven Slot Zero Zero Four CV in the Public Health Department. Do we have a motion for approval, or do y'all want to wait till Matt comes back next week?
I think Matt should be here to kind of give us an explanation on that.
Okay, I'll be happy to wait. We'll be happy to hold this and reschedule this. Absolutely. All right, item eight D is approval of the proposed revisions to Attachment A Denton County Civil Service Rules, Excluded Positions and the Appropriate Action. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, I just want to clarify, this is county civil service. This doesn't have anything to do with the sheriff's civil service.
Correct, they're separate systems.
And since we've got a letter with some more information on it, Gustavo, would y'all would y'all be in opposition to holding it so we'd have some more discussion? Gustavo, I'd like for you to discuss it with one of our elected officials.
Okay.
Will anybody be in, have a problem with holding it to the six, I believe?
I think it's, I'm fine with holding it. And I'd like notifications sent out from y'all to all the departments or the elected officials that have a person listed on this so they have a direct communication from y'all that there might be a proposed change.
Because I, you know, I agree with what you're doing. We talked about it.
Yeah.
But I, you know, we've had some comments about adding more and taking more off. So, I think we need to be in agreement with what we're doing. If you, if you can hold that and discuss with them, as the judge said, and I will.
And I have not heard from them about it.
Yeah.
So, I would like for you to talk to me about the updates.
So, yeah, great. And I'm with you on that. Yes, Commissioner, I'm with you and Judge, I'm with you on that as well. I have spent a lot of time kind of investigating, looking at this as well, reviewing, reading law. I haven't seen any case law about it. You know, obviously, we, we have attorneys for a reason here. And some are on one side and some believe it's black and white. And there's a lot of gray in this as well, especially if you talk to other counties around here and what they've done in the past. And the list that was on the agenda today, some of it I agree with, some of it I don't. So, yeah, I think there's nothing wrong with us sitting back down, going back through this a little bit more.
We'll reschedule it on a future date.
Yeah.
And if, the court members, if you have any questions, let's get with Gustavo and give him our comments. And elected officials, if you can hear me, if you have any questions, please contact us.
And I think he needs to send that out to.
Yeah.
Send it out so everybody's aware.
Yeah, so everybody knows about it.
And I'm happy to have discussions with any of them as well.
Absolutely. Okay.
And I, and actually, I went back and watched the video back whenever this happened in the past. And there was some really good information I was able to ascertain from that that was discussed. I would, I would, I would suggest that you, you know, take your time and go back and watch the court date when that occurred. And I think you'll probably, it'll give you some information as well that you can just listen to and play off of, so.
What date was that?
Um, you know what? I've got a copy and I'll get it to you. How about that? And you can just click on it.
Be great.
Yeah, that's good.
We'll get it to you.
Thank you.
One way or the other. Yes, yes.
And Judge and Commissioners, by no means I will talk to the department heads and elected officials affected by this. This is, has always been a very touchy subject, if you will. The only thing that I'm trying to do with this is, given the interpretation I got from the code, I know that previously the Commissioners Court selected a different list. And that is just the intent. My interpretation of what I see fit better for the county.
And, and Gustavo, as we discussed, you give us what the code says and you make that recommendation of what the code says.
We take that into consideration.
The Commissioners can discuss whether they like it or not.
Yeah.
But you, it doesn't matter whether we like it or not, you give us the code.
Absolutely. And I, and I want to thank, so far, I know that, you know, we've had quite a few people involved in this. And I want to thank them for the time so far they put forth in this. And I would just want to make sure we share all that information with all of us up here so we can make a good educated decision going forward, so. And I appreciate you and your staff as well, so.
Sure.
We'll just put it on hold.
Thank you. 10A, well, let's go back to, so there will be no action on 8D. And then 8E, we'll hold that. We'll reschedule that for when Matt comes back. 10A is approval of the preliminary acceptance of Indian Trail Road Reconstruction Project located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10B, approval request to hold a public hearing Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 at 9:00 AM to consider approval and/or take appropriate action for a zoning change request in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in a zoning district. This is ZA 2301. This property is R 101941A. It is located in Jates Lakeview Estates, Block A, lots one through three. This is 6.06 acres. This is in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12A, approval of the 2023 through 2028 interlocal agreement between Denton County and Cook County for the use of the Denton County Radio Communication System.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 12B, approval of the 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and the Town of Little Elm for the use of the Denton County Radio Communication System.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12C, approval of the City of Dallas's Notice of Renewal Extension of the 2022-2023 Agency Participation Agreement with the Denton County Sheriff's Office for Dallas's grant-funded Internet Crimes Against Children, the ICAC program, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of the Not Away of Denton County Incorporated Fund request to fulfill allocations of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13D, approval of the completion of continuing education hours by Commissioner Kevin W. Falconer for the calendar year 2020-2023 as required by Section 810025 of the Texas Local Government Code. Any appropriate action? The chair move for approval?
I want to see video.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give if you like.
Second.
I take that as a second. So, all, a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13E, approval of completion of required continuing education credits for Denton County District Clerk David Trantham for the calendar year 2023 as required by Section 51.605 of the Texas Government Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13F, approval to terminate, approval of a request to terminate the tax abatement agreement between 31 Gifs LLC and Denton County, Texas for the remaining tax years 2023 and 2024, and any appropriate action.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14A, approval request for final payment of right-of-way funds by Denton County, Texas, and the Texas Department of Transportation texted in amount of $3,910.10 for the fiscal year 156 project and the state highway 114 to 12th Street in Justin, Denton County, Texas, with funding to come from the unallocated BSRP funds. Order line I am 8574909090 and to be transferred to the FM 156 right-of-way judge. Order line I am 8573939090, and any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of the interlocal agreement between the North Central Texas Council of Governments, the COG, and Denton County, Texas for participation in the Near Map Recurring Aerial Photography and Oblique Subscription Service with funding amount of $77,500 to come from order line I am 0153001055. I was recommended by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer, and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C, approval of the 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreement. These are ICAs for the library services within Denton County, Texas, and the Aubrey Area Library, the Flower Mound Public Library, Justin Community Library, the Crumb Public Library, the Lewisville Public Library, Little Elm Public Library, Pilot Point Community Library, the Roanoke Public Library, Singer Public Library, and the Colony Public Library.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All, yes, ma'am.
Are all these libraries still in agreement with us that they have filters on their computers and those libraries so that young people cannot get them?
That, that provision of the agreement has not changed.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreements for ambulance services between Denton County, Texas and the Denton County ESD Number One, Justin Volunteer Fire Department Ambulance Services, the Crumb Fire Department Ambulance Services, the City of Lewisville Ambulance Services, Town of Little Elm Ambulance Services, Pilot Point Fire Department Ambulance Services, Town of Prosper Fire Department Ambulance Services, the City of Roanoke Ambulance Services, Singer Fire Department Ambulance Services, the City of the Colony Ambulance Services, Town of Trophy Club Ambulance Services, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreements for fire protection services between Denton County, Texas and the Denton County ESD Number One, of a local volunteer fire department, the Justin Volunteer Fire Department, the Crumb Fire Department, the City of Lewisville Fire Department, the Town of Little Elm Fire Department, City of Oak Point Fire Department, Pilot Point Fire Department, Town of Prosper Fire Department, City of Roanoke Fire Department, Singer Fire Department, the City of the Colony Fire Department, and the Town of Trophy Club Fire Department.
Still move.
With a motion, who made the motion? I couldn't hear. Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item 17, which is community updates.
How about three?
Where did we miss?
Three A and three.
I will go, I'll go back and read those when we come back. I won't wait because they're not here. All right, do you, do you have any community updates?
I'm sorry, I apologize, Judge. Yes, I do. I have a, get back here. Couple things. Since we didn't have court last week, we had some other sad news in Denton County, the loss of Jill Glover, which was on January 14th, 2024. Ms. Glover was very involved in trying to better the government and was a big-time political advocate. And not that we're up here to talk about politics, but she was a wonderful lady and, and she'll be missed, so want to say condolences to her and her family.
Yes.
Wish them all the best. And then on the better part of news, Lake Ray Robert State Park, we had the Isadu Boz, is that, how's that, how's that?
Aldebu.
Yeah, okay, that sounds great, whatever. That place. Now, what's really cool about it is it was the most visited park, state park, in 2023 with 879,000 visitors. And that's the most in the state of Texas. And that's pretty impressive because that state park is right over here, not far from us whatsoever. And the, and the interesting thing is that lake is just a wonderful lake. Of course, I live right there, so I'm pretty proud of it. But it just seems like it's kind of a hidden gem. But this tells me it's not a hidden gem. Not anymore.
You can't get reservations there.
No, I'm sure, yeah. So, it's, anyway, I thought that was really cool to have that in Denton County. And it's a lake real close to us. All that tells you is that much, that amount of traffic that's going in and out. And not all those people live close by. Quite a few do, but not all of them do. So, it's a lot of, of funding that's coming to us for gas and, and for our cities and things of that nature. So, it's excellent. I love that idea. And I think how great that will be also for us when we have, when we put together our, our center out there, they'll, we'll have a spillover from that as well, but.
Absolutely.
And that's it.
Perfect. That's great.
Thank you, Judge.
You bet. Commissioner Falconer?
Yeah, thank you, Judge. So, Little Elm, we have Farmer's Market at the lawn, January 27th. That, that's on the lawn in Main Street. And Carrollton, continuing the exhibit with the Contemporary African-American Surgeon starts. That's through January 27th as well. And that's at the Josie Ranch Library. And then if Commissioner Mitchell doesn't mind, I'll just mention the Castle Hills Village Shops will be every Saturday. They're having their events from nine to one, so Four Seasons Markets.
Perfect, great. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
I don't have very many this week. I have the Daddy's Daughter Dance in January in Holland Village. Going to be at the Hilton Garden Inn in Louisville. The VITA Program Income Tax Preparation, January 5th, excuse me, 25th, January 27th at the Lewisville Public Library. So, that's all I have.
Perfect, good. Thank you, Commissioner Edmondson.
Commissioner Mitchell, there's a farmer's market in Harper's Square. It says.
It's ongoing, yes. Yes. Thank you.
We have fun with recycling.
Yeah, you turn your mic on, ma'am.
Is that better?
There you go.
We have fun with recycling on January 23rd from four to five. This is for kids ages four to 12 to learn that recycling is fun and it helps teach them individual responsibility. And then on the 27th, we have an outdoor expo in the Clear Creek National Heritage Center, which is 3310 Collins Road. This is to learn about how to get outdoors in the Denton area. So, we've got all kinds of outdoor things going on. Thank you.
I'm good.
Perfect, thank you. All right. We'll come back and do these resolutions when we get, for the, our retirees who are not with us today. We'll do those after we break for executive session.
Got it.
We've got several items for executive session under 15A, Texas Government Code 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Close meeting deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect regarding commercial or financial information